City Council Meeting on Monday, July 3rd, 2017. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, I forgot the roll call. I'm off to a good start, aren't I? Mayor Kelvin. Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? We did receive an email on the 30th, and you're willing to do that, Mr. Holland?
Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, I would propose that we add to the agenda the acknowledgement of Robins Island's Destination Playground donation. It's a resolution accepting the donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation for Robins Island. This will be presented to us by our attorney, Robert Scott.
Do you also want to just acknowledge the deletion that was requested of item number 10?
Yes, I would also have the council consider the removal of the amendment to the Wilmer Industrial Land Pricing Write-Down Policy for the city of Wilmer.
And that'll be brought back at another work session?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we need a motion. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as corrected?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So the next item is the consent agenda items. Judy?
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the approval of the City Council minutes of June 19th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of June 26th, Rice Hospital Board minutes of June 21st, Planning Commission minutes of June 28th, approved purchase of five replacement squad cars for the Police Department, approved MPCA stipulation agreement for stormwater violations, a resolution to approve extension of joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety and Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, resolution acknowledging the donation from January 1, 2017 through June 30 of 2017, resolution accepting project number 1603A, the overlay of Lakeland Drive Northeast and Ella Avenue Northwest, and authorizing final payment, and to accept the Police Commission minutes of April 21st, Human Rights Commission minutes of May 16th, Border Zoning Appeals minutes of June 19th, Airport Commission minutes of June 21st, Wcer Joint Powers Board minutes of June 23rd, and the accounts payable report through June 28, 2017.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we need to do a roll call.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Yeah. Seven ayes, zero nays. All right. Our next item is public hearings. Our first one is Oslo Meadows Special Assessment. And Judy, you're going to present that?
Yes.
And I will open the public hearing.
The public hearing that we're holding tonight is to consider reassessing the special assessments against two parcels of land that recently sold in the Oslo Meadows plat of the city of Wilmer. And this is a requirement to place the additional assessments against the parcel. We've requested the City Council hold a public hearing to take testimony from the buyers and then certify the remaining dollar amount against said parcels for five years at the stated project interest rate.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the public hearing? There's no one here, so... If not, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up here for the council's recommendation.
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for the Oslo Meadows Special Assessments. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call also. Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Abstain.
Okay, I have six ayes, zero nays, one abstain. The resolution passes. Our second public hearing is the annual stormwater hearing, and that is Sean Christensen. And I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the council. As if you didn't think you had enough hearing from me tonight, I got a little bit more. Tonight, I will present the annual municipal separate storm sewer meeting, the MS4, as it's affectionately called, and when it's spelled out, you can see exactly why it's called the MS4. The deadline each year for this, and I've got a slide on this later too, but the deadline for each year to the MPCA is June 30th, and it's for the previous year. So this will be for calendar year 16, and the results of tonight's meeting, along with the attendance, which unfortunately is not as much as I had hoped, will be reported in next year's meeting and annual report. Purpose of the meeting. Purpose of this meeting annually is to continue to raise awareness of the importance of good stormwater management. It gives, also gives an updated status of the compliance with our MS4 permit conditions, what has the city done in 16, what is the city currently doing in 17, and what are our plans for the future. It also allows public to comment on the city of Wilmer's implementation procedures and anything else is public comment, period. So what is an MS4? I'll read the long definition, and then we can obviously narrow that down. Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System is a conveyance or system of conveyances designed and used for collecting storm water, which includes roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, manmade channels, storm drains, that is owned or operated by a government unit having jurisdiction under section 208 of the Clean Water Act that discharges to waters of the United States. So what does that mean? It means our storm system is what that means. This is the official definition that the state and the feds, federal government wants you to use and have it listed, that's section 208, as a United States Clean Water Act. Excuse me. Little bit of background, the MPCA designated under Minnesota Chapter 7090 that all cities outside of urbanized areas with a population greater than 10,000 must obtain an NPDS stormwater permit. And NPDS, I don't have it up there, but is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, for those of few keeping track of all the acronyms. Wilmer meets the requirements as designated MS4 with the 2010 consensus of 19,610 people. City originally received approvals for the, what we affectionately call SWIP, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, and the MS4 permit in 2008. Current general permit coverage is from August 1 of 2013 to July 31 of 2018. So what is a SWIP? As I mentioned earlier, it's Storm Water Pollution Prevention, and I think I maybe said plan, but program. Those two words obviously are interchangeable. City developed a SWIP to address six minimum control measures, or MCMs, set by the MPCA. Number one, public education and outreach. Number two, public participation and involvement. Number three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Number four, construction site runoff controls. Number five, post-construction stormwater management, and number six, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So the goal of the SWIP is to create best management practices which will reduce or eliminate sediment and other pollutants from our lakes, rivers, and wetlands. So what are some of our MS4 accomplishments completed in 2016? We collected 4,140 cubic yards of material just from street sweeping. That was, to narrow it down even further, that was only from March through December of 2016. In comparison, in 2015, we collected almost 4,800 cubic yards, and in 2014, we collected 3,500 cubic yards. So a significant amount of material is collected. And the date on that photo, if you can't see it, is June, and so I would venture to guess that that was just under half of what was collected on the year in that particular pile. Some other accomplishments, we inspected 40 outfalls and 25 ponds. Per part of our requirements, we're required to inspect a third, I believe, each year per the MPCA requirements. One of the items that was brought up in the audit, which we did accomplish for the MPCA. We did some covert installations. We installed one of Dairy Queen, at the Dairy Queen driveway just off Highway 12 East. We did some ditch repairs, Branch 3, that bottom right-hand picture is the, we had some bank fall away in Branch 3 of that ditch, and that was repaired. And then the bottom two pictures on the left is the picture I mentioned earlier that we had of the storm catch basin, of some of the block and some of the bricks falling into that one. That was on Trot Avenue at the FedEx Building that we repaired. Other accomplishments, the, I mentioned illicit discharge detection and elimination, or IDDE. This pond here is a before and after shot, if you will. The left picture is a small breach in the bank after a rainstorm. And then they call it turbid water, so it's dirty water, if you will, was noticed in that branch. And then when it was followed to the source, a temporary water detention basin is where that source was, obviously, on a construction site. Site foreman was notified shortly after this breach and was fixed very quickly, and that's what the right photo shows, is the fix to that stormwater pond. So we also do construction site stormwater inspections, and see what order these pictures are in here, the illicit discharge detection and elimination. Lower-left photo is, again, that term again, the turbid discharge into Branch 227 of ditch 23A, and that was during a construction site inspection. Contractor was notified, and the issue was eliminated. Contractor had been pumping water from a newly constructed pond into the storm system, and obviously, that's a no-no, and so we notified the contractor, and they ceased immediately. We also put in here, one of the things that we got dinged for on our audit was not having enough checklists, and so we've put in here an example of one of the checklists that we hadn't used to the pleasure of the MPCA, but we had them in our repertoire of information. And so we're going to be pulling these out some more and using them more often. And the other two pictures, you can just see, you know, the soil and the dirt that went over the top of the silt fence, which is what that's supposed to prevent, that came out on the street on that upper-right photo. And the lower-right photo is another, it's got a pile of soil there without a silt fence around it, and then you can see between that and some trash in the catch basin that those need to be taken care of. Also, if you notice that upper picture, the date is August 16th, so if you'll recall, that was five days after the, our big storm last year, and so there was a number of these sites that needed to be cleaned up after that storm. That lower picture is right before that storm, and so I'd be curious to see what that pile looked like after that storm, but that was the earlier one. Yes, sir?
That form, is that approved by the Pollution Control Agency?
You know, what's interesting, Councilmember Alvarado, they don't really have an approved form or necessarily require the approval of our forms, just that we have one. And so we do, and we will be using it more than we... In the past, we've, I've always said that we've met the intent of what our permit says by accomplishing these items, but we didn't have a written documentation of those items. We didn't take the time or have the manpower to write that information down on a checklist. We just did it verbally in a lot of cases.
What I worry about is that we're believing we're doing the correct thing, but then they come back and say, "Oh, you should have."
Right.
You know what I'm saying? But if there isn't a template or something to follow...
Right. They've got, based earlier on my, the comments about the minimum control measures and thinking of those, they've got items that you need to check in those minimum control measures, and those are listed on this form, and so we're meeting their intent at this point.
Great, thank you.
So what are some accomplishments planned for 17? As I mentioned, we need to, that's part of the deal too, is we have to explain at this meeting what we plan on accomplishing this year or on current year. So we're going to update our webpage, and as you know, the city has a new webpage, and we're going to add more information specific to stormwater on that site. We might add some of these checklists, we might add some of those other things on there and get that taken care of. We're going to continue to educate the city staff, developers, contractors, and homeowners, and the general public in the importance of stormwater quality. And then, of course, along with that comes the education of the general public on the importance of keeping gutters clean, which is two of those pictures there, as you can see. And we've noticed, or we've mentioned a number of times, the requirement really to not let your grass clippings go into the street, into the curb and gutter, because it ends up in the storm drain systems, and it fouls up our chemical numbers and our things of that nature. So per this MS4, it's actually illegal to do that. I know there's some communities that find people if they do that. We're not to that point, but it's pretty obvious to see whose grass clippings they are when they're blowing over the sidewalk. So I would say, please keep your grass clippings on the lawn or picked up. And then the other one is leaves, which for a few weeks out of every year, that's very difficult to prevent, but we try to let people know the importance of keeping the gutters clean. With only one street sweeper and 135 miles of streets, we can't get everywhere at the same time, and so it's tough to keep up with all that. So more accomplishments planned for 17. The stormwater ordinances, you're going to start seeing a lot of those updates coming your way. That was one of the big things that the MPCA found in our audit, and they find us pretty good on, was that we didn't have updated ordinances. We have stormwater ordinances, but, you know, everything from simple five acre, we had to upgrade, or downgrade it rather, from a five-acre parcel needing a SWIP plan to a one-acre parcel, and some things like that just needed to be updated. We had to update SWIP checklists, and we got to schedule some of the illicit discharge training for staff. Was there a question? Do you want me to...
We're actually in the public hearing part of it, so I don't know if it's okay for us to ask questions, or if you, during the public hearing, or if we should wait till afterwards, so...
I'll wait.
We should wait. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this annual report, why it's come here about this time of year, every year, it's required to be reported June 30th, and some of you may say that, though I'm a few days late, but this meeting results will actually end up on the 17 report. The 16 report was submitted last week, and so we're in the process, we've followed the process there. We'll include all the comments received tonight, or if they, you know, I suppose email in within the near future, we'll receive those comments and include them in the report. And then we'll notify MPCA if any changes to the SWIP based on those comments or anything we've done in this year. We also will document the number of people present at this meeting, and I'm going to take the liberty to count all the council members so that I've got better numbers for that, so... And that's it of mine. Questions or comments from...
Okay, this is the public hearing portion, and if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the council for your questions, and we will need a motion to receive the information for the documentation.
Make a motion to receive it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion and questions here at the table? Fernando? Councilmember Alvarado, sorry.
Public Works Director, Christensen, could you go back to the form that you shared with us, please? Yeah. I would change, I would take the year out. If you wanted to put like 2,000, and then write the year in. And the reason for that is, I don't want to have boxed in the boxes of these forms with that year on, and people go, "Oh, that's an outdated form, we're not going to use it." So if you would eliminate that, leave a blank for the year, obviously, we'll have them write the year in.
That's a good point, and I didn't realize that that was on there until you pointed that out. So we'll probably, you're right, remove the 2017 and just put a blank behind the date, because then people will put the year, whoever's inspecting will put the year on there.
Right. And then the other thing that we do is, in a business, we number our forms. So if there's a revision, we put the form number XYZ, and then we put the month and the year, so we know when it was established, and when there's a revision, you can have a revision date. I don't know if you have a protocol for numbering your forms or not, but something to think about.
And that's a good point. I will make that point as well, even in the footer of the page or something, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem. How do some of the communities get by with it, where they'll have a week, and they'll let the residents rake all their leaves onto the street, and then the city comes by and sucks them up? What happens if it rains in the meantime and goes down the drain?
Councilmember Fagerly, that's probably why the other municipalities don't do it. There's going to be pros and cons with doing that process. I've talked to a few of the municipalities and jurisdictions that do that, and some people say exactly that. Yeah, let's, you know, rake all your leaves to the street, and we'll take care of them. As in my earlier presentation on the Public Works Crew, with one sweeper and 135 miles, that makes it a little challenging at best, especially if, you know, if you'd never had any wind, it might work just fine, or rain. But, you know, that's some of the challenges. Do you do that for your citizens, or do you, you know, say, "Okay, citizens, you need to take care of your own leaves on your own lawn," so...
But how can the state allow that, MPCA?
Allow them to pick that up?
To dump it into the street.
I think there would probably be restrictions on how long it could be there. And so if you had a program that those leaves were there on, you know, even days, or once a week or something, then you'd have to have enough staff to go pick all those up at the same time, because you're exactly right, you start pushing them down the storm drain. I don't think, I know MPCA wouldn't take too kindly to that.
Especially if we did it.
Mr. Christensen, I have a question about the grass clippings. Do we do any education on why they shouldn't be in the street? My observation is, we have a lot of commercial people who mow, who do that on First Street, all the way up and down, and you'll see the grass clippings there. So I'm just curious if we do have any educational opportunities there, or fines? I don't know.
Right. So part of the stipulations from that agreement that we just went through with the audit was that we didn't do enough education of the public. And to this point, we've done, you know, every time, every once in a while, or occasionally we'll post it on our Twitter and Facebook pages, the guys will go out with, they've got grass clipping posters, if they see someone doing it, they'll hand them something and just remind them to not put them in the street. Most people, most people will do it, will abide by that, but I think you're exactly right. I think there's some people that don't know, or you get somebody new on the mower this year, and they're just, you know, they, instead of going counterclockwise around the lawn, they go clockwise or whatever, so that it blows out instead of in. I think we need to get better with the education process. I think these public meetings like this helps. We've got, we've got a number of, like I say, posters of a half a dozen different things that would be considered illicit discharge, and items into the storm drain, and so we're working on that, and we'll continue to work on that with different public forums.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. We have a motion and a second to receive the information for our annual stormwater report for MS4 permitting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next item is open forum, and we do not have anyone signed up to speak, and so we'll move on to the agenda item that we added, which is to acknowledge donations from Robins Island, Robins Island donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation for the Robins Island Destination Playground Project. And I believe our city attorney, Robert Scott, is going to present this.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council. You have before you a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $75,000 from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation. You've seen several of these come through before, and I understand you'll probably see several more. As expenses from the Destination Playground Project come in, these donations are being submitted to cover the entire costs of that project. This resolution tracks closely with the first resolution that the council passed stating that the $75,000 donation is made on certain conditions. The big condition is that money be spent on the Destination Playground Project. It also had some procedures for how the expenses would be incurred and approved, and I understand those must be going smoothly, because I have not been contacted about any of them. So with that said, this motion, excuse me, this resolution is to accept the donation. By state law, it does require a two-thirds vote of the council, so it needs six votes to pass.
Okay. Is there anyone who would be willing to enter that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? And do we need a roll call on this, since you said six?
Yes.
All right. Roll call. Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. All right. Our next item is the city administrator comments.
Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, I just wanted to mention today, a reminder that I have put together arrangements for July 22 for the retreat. We will have it at the same bank in approximately the same hours. More information on that will be coming out very soon, is once I get that locked in, and we will be using Chad Weinstein as the moderator. Also, I would just say that I'm going to meet with MNDOT very soon here, this month, and one of the concerns I have is the signage and the traffic control devices that we have here in town are out of date, they're rusted, they're five different colors. And so that's one of the things that I'm going to express to MNDOT, is that there's some responsibility that they have for these traffic control devices. But also, I will make it available to them that, you know, we are willing to work as a partner with MNDOT, so that we can make sure that we give the best presentation into Wilmer. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that there are some things that I've pointed out to staff, that there's some posts around town here that are just posts. They're just in the ground, and they've been there for a long time, for years, maybe even decades. And I know some people find that hard to believe, but literally... And I know some people find that hard to believe, but literally decades. And you just don't notice them, but I think it's easier for my eye to catch them, because I'm new here to town, and I, I'm obsessed too, so I do look at those things. So anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that, and hopefully, as we'll phase those changes in, it won't be accomplished in one year, but over a series of a couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you. It says I'm next on the list, and I will simply just say, I hope everyone has a great and safe Fourth of July. But I am going to take the liberty to ask both Chief Velt and Chief Hanson, I think you both have some events coming up in the future. Is there, am I off on dates, or is there anything you want to share with us?
For the Police Department, July 21st, if people want to mark their calendars, there's a community day at Robins Island, running from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It'd be great if anybody could show up, everyone could show up. It's going to be a combination of Sheriff's Department, Police Department, DNR, State Patrol, weather permitting, the State Patrol helicopter will be there, some fun and games, bouncy house and that type of thing, so. And I believe that's right before the movie in the park that night, too, so.
Okay.
Plan for a whole evening at Robins Island. And then July 31st for us will be Pop with a Cop Day. That's kind of a continuation of our Coffee with Cops program, and that'll be July 31st, Miller Park, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and Bernix Pepsi is donating the pop for that day.
Okay. Chief Hanson, do you have something coming up, if I remember correctly, or am I wrong?
You may have to refresh me, I guess. I don't think I have anything until October.
Okay. I apologize. You just recovered from, you recovered from the Wilmer Fest.
Yes, Wilmer Fest, the pancake feeding parade, so.
Okay.
That's it for a while, hopefully.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Councilmembers, anyone have any comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Just a procedural question. The Mayor Protam does not relinquish rights to vote on any of these things. You're still a council member when you vote, so I'm curious, as to why you skipped during every vote. That's in our rules of order.
I will just say that you're correct, and I didn't notice that she was skipped, but as the Mayor Protam, she can vote. You're correct.
And then I thought maybe the fire chief might have some hordes of wisdom on fireworks within the city limits. Are they legal, illegal, or what can and can't be done?
I believe if they stay on the ground, they are legal. You cannot set them off on a public street or public area. And then if they don't, basically, if they don't disturb somebody else, they're, they are legal. If they fly in the air, make a big bang, or, or any of that thing, they are not legal. So you have to indulge yourself into going to a permitted fireworks show, I guess.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Just a quick protocol issue as well. I believe we, when we, when we changed our donation piece to getting a report every six months, we were going to read those into the record instead of having them on a consent agenda. And if that is, is not the case, you can correct me, but since I believe it is, I'll acknowledge the $500 from the Wilmer Steners Community Fund for the purchase of pitching mounds, to be used for Little League players at Sunrise Park. We did approve that under the consent agenda, but I thought we were highlighting those, because we do them every six months. So thank you for the donation.
It might be appropriate to just ask that that list of donations be brought to the next meeting, so that we can acknowledge the rest of the donations. All right. Anyone else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Oh, can I say a few words?
Yes, you may, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I was just going to say, the Somalia community had a nice celebration of Independence Day. Councilmember Mesky and Councilmember Nelson were present. They had, later on in the day, didn't you say there were like 600 people present? Yeah, there was music, and food, and just real good community involvement from that community, so it was fun to attend. So that was interesting. And, and whenever you do something new, you learn something, and I've learned about their flag and the star, and what it means, and it was very interesting. The five-pointed star represents the five tribes of Somalia. The blue background represents the formation of the nation precipitated by the work of the United Nations. So I thought that was very interesting. So that was good. I keep wanting, I want to encourage our elders to share with the young people, keep our streets clean, throw garbage in receptacles. People come to Wilmer, and that's one of the first things they notice, how clean our city is. Let's keep our city clean. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We do have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.